My name is Joan Woodard and I'm the Hearing Examiner this evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending. I make a recommendation only to the county commissioners. I do not make the final decision. I will be submitting my recommendation to staff within two weeks of this evening's hearing. The application will then be scheduled for deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, I need you to fill out one of the sheets in the back, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record before you begin your testimony. First, staff will introduce the application. Then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will get into the public comment sheets and public comment on Zoom as well. We will hear from those who are in favor, then those who are neutral, and then we will hear from those who are opposed. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant or their representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the public hearing. After that point, we will receive no more testimony. The time limits are 30 minutes for the applicant and their initial presentation, five minutes for public testimony, and 15 minutes for applicant rebuttal. Sometimes I ask questions and that doesn't cut into the timeframe. I would ask that you direct all of your testimony to me and not to the audience. Are there any questions regarding these proceedings tonight? We have one?
When a person speaks, can we move our mics?
Yes, that's fine. Anything else? Yes?
Madam Hearing Examiner, for the audience's sake and anyone on Zoom, I am the Zoom host. I'm David Callahan. I have muted everyone except for Vlad, the staff that will be speaking to you. You have your own microphone, so that's why everyone in Zoom can hear you unrelated to Zoom. And we have a camera turned on you, and that's why when I speak, it has my name, but your photograph or your picture or image, if you will. The, as the host, I will be controlling everyone that's zoomed in, meaning when you tell me you're ready to accept the public comments, we'll take everyone in the audience first, and then I'll start reading off names and asking people if they want to talk that are on Zoom second.
And do you want to do that in order of approved, I mean, those who are in favor and will do present and then Zoom?
We can certainly ask it that way.
Or do you want to get through all of the present and then do Zooms?
To me, it'd be easier if you're okay with do present, whether for or against, and then we could do Zoom the same way.
Okay. That's fine.
I mean, for or against.
Yeah. Fine. Yeah.
Seems like I'm missing something. Bear with me a second. Oh, for the audience's sake. Normally, we would have that screen up and running, but with Zoom and COVID, we've gone to this side so that you can see everything happens all the time live. It makes it hard on the audience, but they're free to get out and move if they want to see what the staff's presenting or anyone that from the public that wants to present for that matter.
Right. Good.
So with that, I think I'm done unless you have questions of me, and we're ready for Vlad to introduce the case.
I don't, but the other thing I'd like to say is obviously we have very good attendance this evening, at least in present. I don't know what we'll have in Zoom. I urge you all to stay and hear what the applicant's rebuttal is to any of your input this evening. A lot of times, we have hearings where people state their case and then they leave, and they've missed out on hearing the whole presentation. So I would urge you to do that. And it's probably a good thing we just have one this evening. So without further ado...
Sorry, I'm still muting people that are logging in. I can't mute them until they're logged in.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll begin our hearing this evening for case number CUP 19-0004. And Vlad is our presenter from staff.
Good evening. For the record, Vlad, in Kootenay County Community Development. Ms. Hearing Examiner, I am having a hard time hearing you.
Pull the mic.
All right. Hopefully, that's better.
Much better. Thank you. Can everyone hear me quite well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As you have just stated, this is a request, case number CUP 190004, by Upper Columbia Substate Adventist, for the approval of a conditional use permit allowed for the establishment of a private school and a place of worship. Before I get into the specifics of this request, I'd like to state on the record that we have received an overwhelming amount of comments on this proposal. And in review of all of those comments, it came to my intention that there has been some level of miscommunication at some point throughout the review of this request, that a number of individuals have provided comments in opposition of the zone change and a subsequent division of land through the platting process. I want to be very clear that this proposal tonight is a conditional use permit. It's a process for the review and a decision of a land use with specific conditions of approval set in place in order to mitigate impacts should the application be approved. It has absolutely no relevance to the zone change process that the county has or a subdivision process that creates additional density of the parent parcel. Having said that, I can now begin with the details of this request. As you can see, based on the Ariel County overlay map, the subject parcel is located on the north side of the county. It's located directly to the northeast of the intersection of Rimrock Road and Lancaster Road. The subject parcel consists of 10 acres, and it was boundary line adjusted from the parcel to the east that is quite larger. Boundary line adjustment does not imply that this parcel was created as a separate entity. What it means is that the boundary line adjustment allows for the geographical change of the boundaries of the two parcels involved in the process. So no additional density was created. As you can see on the lower slide, the aerial overlay shows the highlighted 10 acre parcel that is mostly undeveloped with a farmhouse on the southeast corner. The subject parcel of land is zoned agricultural, and it is bounded by parcels that are zoned agricultural to the west, the north, and east. Parcels to the south are zoned agricultural suburban, and these parcels have been created through a, through a platting process at some point in the past, and they present a much higher density than what is currently in the area to the north of Lancaster Road. The comp plan designation for this property is country, and the country comprehensive plan designation allows for non-residential uses that support residential development. In this case, the direct correlation between the non-residential use being a proposal for a private school and a place of worship in the view of the county staff is to support the residential development in the needed surrounding area. The applicant is proposing the request in two different phases. The first phase will include the construction of a private school approximately 20,000 square feet with supporting facilities, including a playground, offices, and associated classrooms. This school would serve or provide education for kids K through eighth grade, and potentially, should the school grow in the number of students, accommodate those who are in high school grades nine through 12. It is anticipated that the school would start with 20 kids the first year, 30 kids in the third year, and up to 100 students in five years. The second phase of this request is to develop or to construct a, roughly a 21,000 square foot adjoining building that would serve as a church facility. And as you can see on the screen, it would start with approximately 200 members and end up at year five with 300 individuals. So the phasing would allow for a variety of different uses, and the applicant's narrative states that the primary school facility would start off as a multi-use building, which may allow for worship services until phase two comes to fruition. This is the conceptual plan that we received from the applicant recently. It's slightly different than what was originally proposed over a year ago. It is anticipated that access to the proposed development would occur with one access approach off of Rimrock and a second access approach off of Lancaster Road. It is possible that the existing farmhouse and the outbuildings that are currently on the property may be demolished to make way for the improvements and supporting facilities on site. This is the original or the conceptual design drawing that we received in the file when the application, the application was submitted. I do understand that the architect has submitted a more recent revised rendering that he will present for you tonight, but this is something that is somewhat similar to what is likely going to be constructed should this application be approved. These are the photos of the subject parcel in question. As you can see, it is, there's very little vegetation on site with some sparse vegetation adjoining the existing outbuildings and the farmhouse, and their remaining portion of the property is pastureland. It's possible that it was used for farming operation at some point in the past, but however, however, at this point, there's no indication of such use on site. Through their review process, we solicit comments from all of the agencies that are listed on the screen. There were at least a couple of agencies that requested that the applicant annex the subject property into their jurisdictional boundaries for provision of services, one of them being North Kootenay Water and Sewer District, and the second one being Beadmore Lake Sewer District. Through the review process and assessment of the applicant's request, the property was annexed into these two agency jurisdictional boundaries, and we did receive a preliminary "will serve" letter that would make appropriate accommodations to serve this development. We also received comments from the other agencies that either had no comments or submitted recommendations and future requirements for this development, specifically being Lakes Highway District. The Lakes Highway District Board requested that the applicant enter into their road development agreement. It's a document that the applicant agrees to or signs along with the Highway District to address any necessary improvements to the existing road conditions in the area, which may include potentially a traffic impact study to assess the AM and PM peak trips, to assess overall average daily trips, and the level of service of the surrounding public rights and ways that provide access. At this point, the Highway District does not have a specific issue or direction, but the road development agreement spells out the need for future improvements should they become necessary. The Department of Fish and Games provided their comments and asked if should there be fencing that a wildlife-friendly fencing be constructed along the perimeter of the property. The, the Kootenay County Building Division Department provided comments for future building permits on this site. So the conditions that we placed in the proposed staff report for the approval of this request addresses all of these comments as conditions of approval. Through the public comment period, we received a total of 46 comments prior to the end of the public comment period, with, as you can see, 45 comments in opposition and only one in support. Based on review of those comments, the two main issues that the opposition brought up were the impacts to the existing road system being Lancaster Road and the compatibility of the development with the existing residential and agricultural conditions in the area. Staff does understand these concerns, and I would like to address them in order of, as they're stated on the screen. We believe that the increase in traffic can be safely handled through the road development agreement with the Highway District and can adequately address any improvements in any dedication for future turn lanes, acceleration lanes, and so forth. In terms of the compatibility concerns, I'd like to go back to the zoning map and address it. This is a very unique set of circumstances that we rarely deal with. A majority of places of worship or assembly or schools are requested in rural zones surrounded by rural development of five acres or greater. In this case, what we have is we have a unique circumstance where the development north of Lancaster Road is very, is somewhat agricultural in nature with sparse residential development. However, to the south of Lancaster Road, we have a number of subdivisions with roughly 20 acre parcels of land or less that have been developed over the course of many years. So we have somewhat of a, you know, different set of development conditions, if you will, to the south and to the north of this Lancaster Road. And I believe Lancaster serves as a good breaking point between residential and agricultural development. I'd like to also point out that a private school or a place of worship in many jurisdictions is viewed as an outright permitted use in residential development. And in the county, in Kootenay County, we actually do have a higher standard of having the applicant going through the conditional use process to assess impacts and mitigation. Going back to staff recommendation, while we recognize the applicant's request and the concerns that were raised with regards to impacts, there are two outstanding findings that we would like for the applicant to address as required per Kootenay County Code Section 8, 201 for conditional use permits, required findings under subsection C. And the two remaining questions that need to be addressed by the applicant in this hearing is that the proposal is compatible with the existing homes and businesses and neighborhood and with the natural characteristics of the area, and that the services and facilities for the proposal are available and adequate. We believe that if the applicant can address those concerns and explain to those folks who are opposed to this request that this in fact meets those findings, then this project should be approved. I hereby stand by any, for any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions of you right now, Vlad. Thank you. All right. Now we'll hear from the applicant. I think we have David Morgan and Brant Hay. Hi. You might need to raise up that...
Raise the mic a little bit.
Yeah, you're very tall.
Good evening, everyone. And, Senator Woodard, thank you so much.
Name and address, please.
My name is David Morgan, and I live at 30755 North Caravel Road in Athol, Idaho. I'm the pastor of the Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church.
Yeah, just speak right into it.
Again, my name is David Morgan. I live at 30755 North Caravel Road in Athol, Idaho. I'm the pastor of the Seventh, Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church and here to represent this proposal. I would like to begin by thanking everyone and yourself on behalf of the Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church for this opportunity to present our request to build a church and a school, a private school, on the corner of Rimrock and Lancaster. We sincerely appreciate the efforts and have been made in regards to this project and the time to represent the benefits this project will bring to the community. We are seeking your approval for a conditional use permit in order to construct on our new facility. It includes two phases, as was mentioned earlier. Phase one includes a school, a private school, and a multipurpose building, and phase two would include a church building or house of worship. The Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church seeks to enhance the quality of life for all people in our communities, adhering to the ideals described in the Holy Bible. Because this is one of our core values as a church, we believe this project will be a blessing to and for the community. And these benefits I will address here in just a few moments. I'd like to point out that the Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church has been located on the corner of Lancaster and Government Way since 2001. That's 19 years. And the Seventh-day Adventist Church as a denomination has operated churches and a school in Kootenay County since 1909. So we have been a contributing member to the community for many years and plan to do so in the future. I would like to address phase one, which is the private school of this project first, and then I will speak regarding phase two, which is the church. And then I'll conclude with some comments and benefits to the community. So as far as the private school, as Seventh-day Adventists, we regard the education of children as a top priority, not only in academics, but also in practical skills that will ensure they are contributing members to society that will enhance and better the community. Beyond the previously stated goals of education, we also seek for children to know God and prepare them not only for the work in society, but also to be prepared for the soon coming of Jesus Christ. Our church is mostly composed of families that homeschool their children. So rather than a conventional school with lots of traffic, buses, and sporting events, the current plan that we have for Hayden Lake, our private school, is a small cooperative of homeschooling families meeting two days per week. The education provided will be project-based, which is a developing trend among parents who wish to have more than just strict textbook curriculum sitting at a desk, although that will be included as well. This includes hands-on agricultural training, organic gardening, beekeeping as an example, woodworking, music education, multiple instruments, home economics, and similar skills and studies. So you can see that this will be sort of a unique program in which we're meeting the needs of homeschooling families. Given the recent changes in educational programs throughout the United States, our plan to assist the homeschooling families with a small cooperative, I believe, is actually ahead of the curve, and especially with all the changes that are taking place in our society today. The educational program will operate from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Mondays and Tuesdays. There are currently five families involved in the education of private school, making a total of 21 children of varying ages. So just about there with, we estimate it to be 20 students in year one. This homeschooling cooperative will use the small wing or the facilities, as was presented, to conduct learning experiences and tutoring. The multipurpose building will serve for indoor activities during the winter months. I'd like to present, the question is, so how does this affect our community? Here's some of the things we've thought of that I think will be helpful, eight points. Number one, I think it's helpful to keep in mind that this school that we're developing is for homeschooling families, which narrows the focus of those that will be participating. It will also, at this present time, will only be two days per week in its first year. So we believe it will not significantly add to current traffic situation that is on Lancaster. It will also, point three, will be operating from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So it's not during rush hour traffic in the morning or in the evening. Typically, people are going to school, going to work, trying to get there at eight o'clock or seven, earlier times. So we will begin at 10:00 a.m. and will be concluding around 1:00. As part of the program of our private school, parents will be integrated into the daily education of their children because they're homeschooling families. So there will be no long lines of cars dropping off or picking up students because the parents are required to be there with their children. Keep in mind that this is for the purpose that these parents are seeking assistance in training their children at home. So that will be a part of the program, is assisting the parents, teaching them how to teach their children, not only in basic academics, but also in practical skills. Currently, as I mentioned, there are only 21 students, four of which are my own, composed of five families. So currently, we think, point six, we have an average of about six vehicles to 10 vehicles. And I think each one of you can see that this is minimal impact as far as traffic, and they will be involved in the program on the days of operation. Number seven, there will be no bus service because it's for homeschooling families. There will be no competitive sports and no sports fields with lights and this, and the like, although there will be an area for gardening and outdoor play. In fact, a greenhouse is desired, and that will be part of our classroom. Seventh-day Adventists believe that education should be redemptive in nature with the purpose of restoring human beings to the image of God, our Creator. And Seventh-day Adventist education also includes a focus on the mental, the physical, the social, and the spiritual health of all individuals, as well as intellectual growth and, I think it's very important to note, service to humanity. So part of the plan that we have in educating children and parents is that they will be encouraged to serve the community around. The goal of Adventist education is to nurture thinkers rather than mere reflectors of other men's thoughts or people's thoughts, to promote loving service rather than selfish ambition, to ensure maximum development of each individual's potential, and to embrace all that is true, good, and beautiful. I would now like to address phase two of the project, which includes the church, place of worship. For those that may not be aware, our church services are open to the community and are held each Saturday, beginning at 9:15 a.m., and have an average attendance of 150 to 170 people. That's a recent, within the last month or two, average. And we have counted that an average of 60 to 80 vehicles that arrive at different times throughout the mid-morning on Saturdays. This is the weekend when traffic is low and many people are resting from a busy work week. In addition, having our services on Saturday helps minimize and balance traffic flow due to other churches assembling for worship on Sunday. We also have a midweek service on Wednesdays at 6:00 p.m., which is after the rush hour traffic, with an average attendance of 25 to 30 individuals, and we estimate between 10 to 15 vehicles. We have also hosted special events like weddings, funerals, and youth rallies. Again, children are important to us, and we want to encourage them. These events are not on a regular basis. They're not daily, weekly, nor monthly. They will only contribute traffic on an occasional basis, just like any other church in the area. The church campus will also host events for the betterment of our community because of, we offer healthy lifestyle classes, cooking classes, Dave Ramsey financial peace seminars. We host Alcoholics Anonymous, stop smoking clinics, the management and prevention of diabetes and other ailments that people experience, also depression recovery, and many more. These classes are also open to the entire community and are advertised as such. We've also had Thanksgiving meals and Christmas meals that are open to the community, and especially, we seek those who may not be able to have the ability to be with family or can't provide for themselves. The Seventh-day Adventist Church also helps nurture marriages and families because strong families lead to strong communities, and strong communities lead to a better nation. Our church has programs and ministries to help enhance communication, problem-solving skills, and relationship skills, and are all open to the public, our community. The church campus will also be available for disaster relief as a location in cooperation with local disaster relief agencies in our denominational Seventh-day Adventist Relief Organization. We currently have an agreement with FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management Agency, to provide warehouse space for disaster supplies like food and water for the community in the event of a disaster in Cootney County. I'd also like to point out, currently in our current location, that sheriff's deputies often park in our parking lot, and we would welcome them in this new location as well. They find it a strategic area to answer calls that they have to take care of. I'd like to conclude with mentioning that we have been a faithful and productive member of this community for two decades. New residents in this area have purchased land and developed their property, creating a beautiful landscape of homes, barns, garages, and shops. We are dedicated to maintaining this country setting. Our designer seeks to integrate our project into the current landscape with a rural theme befitting the current architecture of the area. Our project has met, as was mentioned, the permit requirement leading up to this meeting, and our congregation and homeschooling young people will greatly benefit from a rural location that fits the agricultural and gardening aspects of our education center. I want to thank you again for this opportunity to present our plans and express how we believe this project will benefit the community. We therefore respectfully request those commissioners to approve our project. Thank you again for the time to speak.
Have a few questions for you.
Sure.
How large is your current facility?
As far as square footage?
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure I can address someone who might be more familiar with square footage.
Okay. And why is it that that facility doesn't accommodate your desires at this point?
We've, for, one of the reasons is because we're growing as a church. The second reason... The first reason is because we're growing as a church. It doesn't meet our needs. We've also have some restrictions in making any improvements on the property because we are on a septic system, not a public sewer. So that's something that has been greatly changed our view as to, we need a better facility to meet our needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Okay, just curious, it sometimes helps to have an orientation. All right. We have Brant Hay, who is an applicant representative and wishes to speak.
Hello.
Hi. Name and address, please.
My name is Brant Hay. My address is 1869 East Seltis Way in Post Falls. I am the architect for this project, and I wanted to say one thing at the outset. There was an image that Vlad had prevented or presented early on that was apparently submitted, the first time this was submitted to the county, and that was prepared before we got involved with this. And so I just wanted to make sure we've developed it quite a bit since then, and so that is definitely not on the table at this time. So what we'll look at here will be where the design is currently going. We're excited about this project for this church. It's a beautiful site, as Vlad mentioned earlier. This kind of location, this kind of zoning is often looked at as a great spot for this kind of use. And so what we are focusing on is figuring out how we can best integrate it into the local area. The site, as shown here on the slide, it's got a little bit of a gentle roll to it. It kind of slopes gently down from one corner to the other, from the northwest to the southeast. And so the way we have laid this out is done our best to a couple things. It's a big priority for us, meaning the design team in the church as well, to maintain as many of the existing natural features as possible. So the building we're proposing would not be disturbing a significant amount of the soil in terms of cutting, regrading, things like that. We're really designing the building to work with the current grade. And also designing the build, there's not a lot of trees on site, but you know, the design is, we're trying to keep as many of those trees as possible. In particular, on the south side along Lancaster, there's some just beautiful, large evergreens, and we certainly will keep as many of those as possible, expect to be able to keep most of them. So we are working to integrate this in. The church has been very clear to me when I meet with them that they love the site. They look the way it looks, and they want the church to fit in as well as it can. A couple of the specific things, strategies we are using to make that possible is, if you look here, you can see there's generous buffers between the roads and the pavement. You know, I think we're all familiar with developments where you have a roadway and then a little strip of grass, and then you have parking. Well, we really want this to be different, and you have much more of a spacious feel. The church has been very clear to us that they do not want to maximize the usability of the site. They don't want to build as much building as they can or have as much parking as they can. They want to find a good balance that meets their needs but also keeps the current appearance of the site and the context as much as possible. So that is, that's the first strategy. The next one is the building is set back a ways. You know, in this area, there are houses, and there are lots of shops and things like that. And often, the larger buildings, particularly the shops and things, they're not the closest thing to the street. And this building is larger than a house. And so one of the things we've wanted to do is set it back so it feels a little more comfortable when you're driving by so it doesn't impact any sightlines or viewlines around the intersection. And so it is definitely set up like that. That kind of covers, you know, the main things with the site for this property. I guess the only other thing I'll mention is, there definitely is the plan to make sure the parking, as is shown in the renderings, has a fair amount of landscaping in it. So it's, you know, going to be broken up in terms of scale and things, and minimizes the visual impact of a large parking lot. And as I said earlier, the goal is not to just maximize the amount of parking. It's to have what they need but nothing more. In terms of the building itself, I just wanted to mention a couple specific things. When you have residences in the area, there's lots of gorgeous homes in the area, and there's a way that they are typically designed and detailed. And you also have a lot of more agricultural buildings, whether it's in the agricultural zone or on the private homes. And those are often shops, barns, things like that. And so one of the goals we have with this design is to keep the scale of the different individual massings, parts of the building, relatively consistent with the largest buildings that you see in the area already. So although this building is total square footage when it's all built, is larger, I would expect, than any shop down the street. If you look at it, the way it is designed and massing, you can see that there are certain distinct portions of the building, and it's broken into several of those. And the goal is that each one of those would feel relatively consistent with perhaps the scale of a larger shop in the area. Now, I say that in terms of scale but not in terms of design or detail. So the church has been very adamant to us that they want this to feel residential. They want it to feel more like a house than a church. And so in terms of scale, the goal is for the individual parts to feel consistent with those in the area. But in terms of detail, the goal is for this to be designed in a way that feels much more like a home, both outside and inside it. So that is the approach we have taken, and to, as far as I can tell, that very much is in keeping with that first bullet point Vlad had in terms of what they need to make sure, requirements that the church is doing. I think we're addressing that quite well. I just want to mention one other thing on a personal note. All those comments were professional as the architect for the project. Personally, for several years, I have been a member of a homeschooling co-op, very similar to what they describe. And it has been a wonderful experience, but I can attest to everything that Pastor David mentioned earlier in the sense it is drastically difference, different than any, you know, government or private school that's more of a conventional model. I can tell you the ones we've been in, they're typically about seventy-five to a hundred people, which is the full goal that David had mentioned for this. And I have never once had to wait in line to enter or leave the parking lot in any of those because it's inherent in the way it's structured, as David mentioned, that it's just very low impact from a traffic point of view. So, you know, we know that this site accommodates the sewer, the water, the electricity, all the things we need. And from everything we can see, you know, that impact on traffic that a lot of people would rightfully be concerned about if it was a conventional school, we just don't see any reason to anticipate that happening for this kind of school. So thank you so much. That's all the comments I had.
Just because my eyesight's lousy, can you tell us which part's phase one and which is phase two?
So phase one is the part that's in black on the top, and then on the bottom where it's kind of a medium gray tone, that is the second phase. And Vlad, would you mind advancing to the next slide, or perhaps to the last slide? So I just wanted to include this because, in addition to those aerial renderings of a full, you know, build-out with both phases, you know, we have been continuing to develop the design with a focus on the first phase. And so this image, you know, gives an example of the direction that this is going. And we feel it's, you know, very consistent with what's appropriate for the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm here, examiner. May I interrupt briefly?
Yes.
Zoom members, there are those of you that are zooming in and zooming out. I do my best to try and mute you as you do, but each time you zoom in, if I don't catch you and you're speaking, it's, you're presenting yourself to the entire community here. So if everyone on Zoom would please mute until we get to the point where the hearing examiner has asked for your comments, and then I will be the one looking for you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Apparently not.
Find that mute button.
Give me a minute. I'll try and mute them. Mute. It's not an email. I think I've got everyone. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to work my way through these sheets here. The first one I have is Bart Shields. It doesn't say what your position is. I'm assuming it's in favor. You wish to speak.
Yes, actually, I do. My name is Bart Shields. I live in Athol, Idaho, 2531 East Eight Mile Avenue. I'm a new member of, well, relatively new member of the Hayden Lake Adventist Church. And I was contemplating not saying anything because I wanted, I didn't want to just be reiterating what's already said. And everything has been covered except one thing I would kind of like to perhaps reassure those that are thinking that this might develop into one of those drive-in, drop-off, the students, five days a week type of schools. And actually, the Hayden Lake Church is one of six Adventist churches in this area. And as one of those churches, we are eligible to be constituent members of a school that's already built. In fact, Brant designed that school, and you'll find it tucked in behind the Seventh-day Adventist Church on Locust Street in Coeur d'Alene. That's a big school. I was just there. My wife goes there once a week for grandma's prayer group. I was there picking her up. There are forty or fifty cars that line up and go in a line and go around there. So the chances of us doing that are zero because we already have that. And no one in the Hayden Lake Church really wants to do that. We opted not to do that but to do this homeschool program. I don't have any homeschoolers. Mine are all grown. But I have some grandchildren that are part of the same program that Brant was talking about. The other thing I'd like to mention is to the other concern about the aesthetics of the community. I've only lived in North Idaho for seven years, but I've been driving Lancaster Boulevard for almost thirty years. Our three children were all part of the Adventist Church's camp, Miavadin, at the end of Lancaster Boulevard. And our children would come up there and work on that camp as wranglers for the horsemanship program. Every year, we'd come up, and I would drive the freeway, and it's a long drive from Southern Oregon where the fires are. And when we would get off and start down Lancaster Boulevard, it was like, oh, peace. And all through the years, I've watched it develop. And, you know, there's a lot of housing there along the way that developed, but it's still wonderful to get off the highway and drive that Boulevard. I can assure you, as a member of the Building and Planning Committee, no one on that committee wants to do anything but enhance that, the farm community. And when they built the Hayden Lake Church, I remember coming up and saying, wow, that church on the corner there has really fit. It looked good. I called it the church in the wild wood, and it was very nice. So I can assure you that we have no intent of ever developing this into a school that is a drive-in, drop-off, five-days-a-week program. It is for homeschoolers, and we have every intent, from the very beginning of the first time I was on that committee, they want this to be a country church. And I think Lancaster could use a country church.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don Eckenroth, in favor, wishes to speak.
And good evening. My name is Don Eckenroth. I reside with my bride of sixty-four years at 528 East Dana Court in Hayden, Idaho. And I serve as the chairman of the Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church's Building and Planning Committee. On the part of the committee, please accept our appreciation for the opportunity to speak at this meeting. We, of course, stand in favor of the application that has resulted in this public hearing. Our committee wishes to assure all interested parties that from the very beginning of our planning meetings, we have been dedicated to the development of a design suitable to the surrounding neighborhood that will enhance rather than detract from the beauty of its rural landscape setting, something that any good respectable neighbor would choose to do. We have been responsible neighbors in this general neighborhood for over nineteen years, seeking to better the lives of all our fellow citizens, regardless of their religious affiliation or lack thereof, notwithstanding their nationality or their ethnic origins. We consider this to be in harmony with the life and ministry of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And it is our hope that in the deliberations of the commissioners that will follow, due consideration will be given to the information we have provided for our request for a conditional use permit. use permit so that we may be allowed to proceed with our present plans. Thank you again for your kind consideration in regards to this and to all who are participating in this meeting tonight. God bless you all.
Rand Edwards, in favor, may wish to speak.
Okay.
Thanks. Guy Maniscalco, in favor, may wish to speak. Okay. And I apologize if I mangle people's names. Okay. Jody Johnson, in favor, may wish to speak.
Hello, my name is Jody Johnson, and I live at 7770 East Highview Drive in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And I became a member of the Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church about three years ago. So I've been living here in this area for about 24 years. So, one of the first contact I had with the Hayden Lake Seventh-day Adventist Church was being a participant in one of their Dave Ramsey Financial Peace Seminars that they had open to the community. And it was a six-week, I believe, course where we received booklets and information, and then were trained and taught about financial issues that you really don't learn in school. And it was a real benefit for me to participate in that program. And I just want to reiterate that that is something that is still offered, and that is open to the community, and it is a real asset. It's amazing what we as adults need to know that we don't know, and we don't know what we don't know. I've also had the opportunity to participate in some of their health seminars, Stop Diabetes Seminar, health cooking classes, and I have learned a lot as a community member. And I just wanted to reiterate to the new, the community close by to the new location that these classes will still be offered and are a real benefit. The Seventh-day Adventist Health Care System is one of the largest healthcare systems in the world, and as Adventists, where there are pockets of Adventists, there are higher standard of, there are longer lifespans. It's called, it was highlighted in the Blue Zone research, especially surrounding Loma Linda University where the people there live on average of 10 years longer. So we have that to offer the community here. So I just wanted to voice my support of this new facility where we would have new teaching facility, new kitchens, and new classrooms to teach. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Robert Sale, in favor, may wish to speak.
I think it's all been said. Whatever I would add, if you agree.
Lyman.
Oh, sorry. Putz?
Oh, Linda Putz.
Oh.
That's my terrible brain.
Sorry. Neutral, may wish to speak.
I always think, I wish you'd check Miss Neutral.
Uh huh.
Without the thing that comes up to me, so am I the only neutral?
Yes, you are.
Is that I'm going to be the first again? If that's okay with you?
Okay.
Hello, my name is Linda Putz. My address is 4529 East Cattail Court in Hayden. I live about one mile from Rimrock and Lancaster. And as a Christian, I want to say I am more than happy for more churches. Everything everyone has said is absolutely true about the Christian community, about the homeschool community, about the benefit to society, to our country, et cetera. As a homeschooling mom, I graduated both my boys from K through 12, they've now graduated college, I'm all in support of homeschooling. I understand the need for a location for, to have classes, et cetera. But as a native Californian for the first 61 years of my life, I understand what growth can do to a community and to an area. I have lived there now for one year, we moved in just a year ago, and the traffic on Lancaster has changed dramatically because, as was pointed out, the south side of Lancaster is residential, the north side is more agricultural, larger properties. My neighborhood has water issues because there's not enough water pressure. People have to keep putting in a boosting system to enhance the water pressure. We are very concerned also about the septic system. The north side of Lancaster, with the exception now of the church, will have, still has septic, which is what the current church has. Lancaster is one lane in each direction to accommodate between the housing that's being developed and as far as bringing in other businesses, whether it's a church, a business, commercial, retail, et cetera, is going to change, is going to demand a need for more lanes. Somebody mentioned something about changing the lanes for turn lanes, et cetera. They talked about Rimrock and Lancaster as being access points. Truly, Lancaster is the street that people have to come in off of 95. You can't come in off of Rimrock. That's just, I mean, you might have maybe a handful of people, but everyone's going to be coming in off of 95 on Lancaster. The traffic now is terrible. It's going to be even more. And I appreciate their intent to not have it be large and grow, but our whole area in all of Idaho, not just North Idaho, is growing by leaps and bounds, which is why they want to implement the additional registration fees to pay for roads. Growth is inevitable. Responsible growth, I believe, is our responsibility as legislators, as commissioners, as citizens and residents. I just am asking for responsible growth. And I don't think putting a church in the middle of a residential agricultural, what else did he say it was zoned for? Area is conducive to that. I think the church has wonderful potential for growth, which is going to bring more people. More people are homeschooling now than going to public school. So their five families, I really hope grows. I believe wholeheartedly in homeschooling, but I just can see where it would be more beneficial to them to move to an area that has, can handle their increased traffic needs, their sewer and septic needs and water needs, rather than drawing away from the people who live there. If you've got 45 people who are against it and only one in favor who have submitted their opinions, I guess you could say, that's because we live there and we are the ones that are going to be impacted the most by this. The first three speakers were all from Athol that were in support of this, and I just don't, I think it says a lot. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Dean Haggensen, opposed, wishes to speak.
Hi. First of all, I'm...
Name an address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm at 3133 East Lancaster Road, and I'm right across Rimrock Road from this parcel. And let me say that I'm both surprised and disappointed that the staff report didn't just confine itself to the facts of the case, but it went on to blow off 40-some statements of opposition and conclude by suggesting it should be approved. This seems to me the staff report should just consist of, this is what's requested. I am opposed. I have two new approaches that, it's a very busy intersection already, one on Lancaster and one on Rimrock. And as the proponents have probably accurately noted that the student load wouldn't be heavy traffic impact, but certainly the worship services would be, and I hope the worship service grows. Living across the street, I know that the water pressure in the area is already inadequate, and I cannot see something like this being added without significant improvements to that system. And finally, we just do not like to see agricultural land set up into commercial and institutional uses, however worthy they might be. And these are worthy, but it's just the right thing in the wrong place, in my judgment. So I hope that the conditional use permit is denied. And by the way, when and how do we find out what your recommendation is?
You can call the office within two weeks.
Is it the same number? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mark Lord, opposed, wishes to speak.
My name is Mark Lord. I'm an architect. I live at 12574 North Sunflower Loop in Hayden, which happens to be the community of Forest Ridge Estates. I have been asked to be the representative for the community. This is a community of homes of 75 homes. We just coincidentally had our HOA meeting last night, and we ended up taking a straw poll of residents that were in favor or opposed to the project, and it just so happens that the entire community is opposed. So, we're talking about 75 homes. First off, I'd like to give some compliments to the architect for presenting a design concept that at least has some agrarian concepts to it. So at least it's showing some level of respect for this country environment that we have out there. However, there are a few items that I do take issue with, one of which, we had one application that submitted a site plan and floor plan of a project that has now been superseded by an updated site plan, which does not happen to have the elevations or floor plans or anything of the revised plan. It also would appear that the revised concept, I'm assuming, is still showing a Phase One of 20,000 square feet. Is that correct? Okay. And a 21,000 Phase Two. However, the thing that is different from the original application site plan and the new revised site plan is that it shows expansion. Nowhere in the application does it discuss this expansion.
You mean beyond the 41,000 square feet?
Correct. And you could see by the site plan exhibit, it showed expansion on this project. This is not represented anywhere in the project statement. So it's lacking in a comprehensive and thorough application. The trip generations that were represented in this do not reflect that expansion of the church or school in this case. The thing that the minister of the church also talked about was that his trips in the first year were only going to be Monday and Tuesday for the, for the, this was for the school because it was going to be homeschooled. Again, not accurate in the report. This shows from Phase One, first year, Monday through Friday. It doesn't represent it as Monday and Tuesday only. So there are a number of things that are consistently inconsistent in the application. So that needs to be corrected. The other thing that I would like to address is the fact that, and this is one of the biggest glaring ones that I have an issue with. I read in 1.07, and Vlad can certainly comment on this, it talks about the 2010 Cootney County Comprehensive Plan. In this comprehensive plan, it defines this area as "country," quote unquote. Country designation is to protect open space and to promote both agricultural activities that are compatible with rural residential development and residential subdivisions that allow residential and non-residential uses. Within that, it talks about subdivisions are designed to reduce the need to extend infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, and be self-contained and require only very limited public service. This does not do that. This is in direct violation of a comprehensive plan that this county adopted back in 2010. It also talks about providing service to outlying areas that reduce traffic, minimize environmental impacts, and permanently preserve open space. Again, numerous items in this comprehensive plan that this is in violation of. So the other thing that I take issue with is within the staff report, the staff report makes no reference to the comprehensive plan, and in it, it only says under the comprehensive plan analysis, this is reserved for you, Mrs. Woodward, the examiner. Why does the staff report not comment on this when in fact they should?
Thank you. Ryan Moss, opposed, wishes to speak.
Ryan Moss, 12695 North Pebble Creek Drive in Hayden. I'm also part of Forest Ridge Estates. First, I would, like the previous speaker stated, like to commend the Adventist Church for their activities, what they're doing. And I too, as a believer, believe in what they represent and what they're doing in the community, and thank you for that. I also would like to compliment the architectural aspect of this. Nice to see that they're trying to certainly incorporate what I would call the North Idaho architecture into the design. So really, this is not about the church, this and the school. This is about zoning. And my primary concern then therefore is the location of the facility. Nothing against the church, nothing against the school. But as previously stated, the location of the facility, this is a commercial or institutional facility in the middle of agricultural slash residential area. And this opens the door, and from where I'm from, I saw a lot of that. Planning is the gatekeeper in a community. We all know that. And very smart planning can make all the difference in the world on how everything from traffic flow on down functions in a community. So I can't overstress that. So again, my concern is about sound planning, and that's all in due respect, that's not to be personal in any way. And I also would also state that the proposal does seem to be in conflict with the comprehensive plan as adopted by Cootney County. And I don't understand, quite frankly, how staff can actually make a recommendation that they did with two caveats without staying consistent with the plan. So one comment was stated, and I didn't understand this, about the onsite wastewater treatment system at the existing facility, the septic system. And I guess I wouldn't understand why that cannot be connected to sewer, since we do have sewer in the area, and would that not be more cost-effective? Again, not a, an issue regarding the activities of the church or the school, certainly all behind that, as somebody previously stated. Great idea, but because of where this is located, I think, wrong area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jan Wilkins, opposed, wishes to speak. Hi.
I am Jan Wilkins. My address is 12970 North Knox... My address is 12970 North Knox Drive in Hayden. I am the Vice President of the Hayden Lake Watershed Association, a 501(c)(3) organization formed many years ago to preserve and protect Hayden Lake and its surrounding watershed. Over the years and through many issues, it has built a sizable and active constituency. Our organization strongly opposes the aforementioned conditional use permit, as it is not compatible with the existing zoning or land uses in the area. Although the zoning on this 10-acre parcel would not technically change to commercial zoning, it will be used in a manner that is designed for commercial applications with paved parking lots and large buildings for public uses. It is hard to believe that if the church would abandon this site in the future, that it would ever revert to rural residential status. These are the incompatible conditions which will adversely affect the area. Traffic, there are 191 parking spaces provided in the site plan. Potentially, that could add about 400 vehicle trips a day to Lancaster Road into the roads that lead from the site location to the cities of Hayden and Coeur d'Alene. Specifically, Rimrock and Strathorne Roads, which are narrow residential streets, could experience an increase in volume that they were not designed to carry. Speed limits on these roads are 25 to 35 miles an hour, and many of the folks that live along these roads will tell you that speeding and traffic volumes are already a serious problem. There are many letters in the file from homeowners in the immediate area that note that speeding and traffic volume are also a severe problem on Lancaster Road. Secondly, I'd like to address stormwater and runoff, an area which I really feel the county is not addressed at all. According to the site plan submitted in June of 2020, over half of the 10-acre site will be hard surfaces, whether paved or roofed. This means that precipitation will sheet off these surfaces onto adjacent areas. The geotechnical report submitted by All West also states in Section 6.12 that the site is not suitable for stormwater infiltration. That's a quote. This means that stormwater will not be absorbed, rather, it will run off the site. It will find its way to roadside ditches, existing stream channels, or adjacent properties. Due to the property terrain's gradual sloping to the east, water containing parking lot contaminants, gas, oil, particulates, exhaust emissions, et cetera, will wash into tributaries to Bourbon Bay on Hayden Lake, which is where we come in. We are the guardians of the lake. Or into the groundwater. If water crosses Rimrock, which is potentially a surface flow barrier, it would also end up in Avondale Lake. In addition, chemicals used for fertilization and weed control for the remaining lawn areas that are designated on the site plan will also wash into these waterways. These chemicals do not break down quickly and remain part of the watershed literally indefinitely, suspended in the water or infiltrating the sediments and shorelines. Finally, we are concerned with precedent. The master plan for this area calls for rural residential uses. A public/commercial use such as the one proposed does not conform with those planning guidelines. The pressure that it puts on surrounding neighborhoods will have permanent and long-term negative consequences, including establishing a dangerous precedent for other commercial applications in the future. Thank you in advance for your consideration to deny this application.
Thanks for your testimony.
And I'll leave a copy of my testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kevin Hockendorf, opposed, wishes to speak.
My name is Kevin Hockendorf. I live at 15972 North Silver Springs Road in Hayden. And I'm also a general contractor, been a contractor for 15 years, and so I understand the differences and the nuances of the process that we're going through for any building, any building purpose and whatnot. So I understand, also, as I'm a believer in private property rights, I think that if you purchase a piece of property and you're within the scope and the zoning requirements, I think you should be not having to go through a lot of bureaucratic red tape and pay a lot of fees in order to accomplish what you need to. However, I think that at this point, we're not really talking about that, and obviously lots of people have touched on this. I think it is a precedent that we are establishing of, of changing the use. And I know that staff had presented it as not, not truly a zoning change, but in my mind, and I think to a lot of the other folks here, a conditional use permit that is allowing such a significant change is, is something that, that is viewed, you know, by the residents around the area as, as a very permanent thing. I do appreciate everything that was presented tonight, as far as the considerations that were given to the architectural layout and to those, to those portions. I also, you know, I'm, I'm the oldest of five boys. My mom homeschooled us for our entire, you know, schooling career. I have quite a few children, and they're, they're also being homeschooled as well right now, all the school-age ones at least. And so, you know, so I certainly appreciate that aspect of it. And I was blessed to be raised in a Christian home and, and, and know that the, that we are in desperate need of other places and of folks in the community who are able to stand on principle and all that. So I appreciate the things that the church is standing for and the different things it is able to offer. I do think that we are talking about a significant difference from a rural residential zoning or an agricultural zoning, and then in turn, changing it to something that is much more of a public use, commercial use, or even a business use as far as a school goes. I think it's hard to, I think it's hard to project the growth. We all know that there will be growth. We live in an area that's desirable, and we know that that's, that's a good, you know, a good thing for, for all of us to get to the chance and the blessing to live here. And it also means that there's going to be an influx of people coming in, and so it's hard to project over the years. What now is presented is maybe 20 people coming and going throughout the week, you know, is certainly not what I would assume such a large facility is going to end up servicing for the, for the community. I think it's, and growth is, is a good thing in that regard, as far as the homeschooling, as far as the different things, teaching skills to kids. I do just think it's a right thing to do at the wrong places, as others have mentioned. I am concerned about the precedent that it does set. You know, I live, I live just down the road off of East Hayden Lake Road, and so every day that I'm coming home from work, I'm driving down Lancaster, and we do see lots more traffic that's going on there, lots of folks that are, you know, I mean, speeding is, is one thing, obviously, they shouldn't be doing it, you know, but, but there's just an increased traffic that is happening, you know, and, and if we allow this, what's considered a conditional use permit of this magnitude to be allowed on this property, this rural agricultural 10 acres, I live on 15 acres, and my neighbors are all, you know, have larger parcels as well, larger than mine, there's nothing to keep them from doing a boundary line adjustment, granting, granting use of some, of, for some other purpose, you know, than, than what it's zoned for. And then, all of a sudden, my neighbors are able to do that, or whatever else, as far as the precedent is concerned. I think that the area that we live in, there's a reason why we, especially the residents, have chosen to live there, because we figured that even with all the growth that's going on in Cootney County, that it would be an area that we can, that we could still take a breath as we're driving home, and that we can understand that, that, that commercial and urban sprawl or creep is not going to be coming into that area in the ways that you might expect, you know, the other side of 95, where we, where we see the type of development, or Hayden Canyon that's going to be going in, and already adding to so many different changes in the area. So I, I do hope that, you know, I do, I do strongly oppose the, the conditional use permit being granted, and I hope that it won't be allowed because of the precedent that it does set. Thank you.
Thanks. Linda Calleza, opposed, wishes to speak.
My name is Linda Calleza. I live at 3496 East Lancaster, you know, East Lancaster Road. I'm right across the street from this, and I really appreciate some of your questions because they've been very thoughtful. To me, this is very discouraging, like it's already been out. Sounds like this is a slam dunk, that the, that the, that the planning commission is agreed with this, and we're just here as decorations. And the other thing is, he says it's not a zone change. But I've been in Las Vegas, and I've been in California, and in fact, when I was a teacher in Las Vegas, they sent me to a care facility way out from my school. There wasn't anything but jackrabbits. And in two years, there were houses everywhere. So for me, this is a zone change, because it is going to open the door, and once that door is open, you're not going to be able to shut it. The comprehensive plan designated this area as agriculture. All of us in that area bought that property so that we could be in the country. If we had wanted to be in a residential neighborhood, that's where we would have bought. The land in question is grassland, which is cut, and then Rosenberg grazes his cattle on it. The property was in the same family for generations, until Del Kerr bought it two or three years ago, and that was for one purpose only, to make him money by development. You guys are well aware of Del Kerr. We understood the comprehensive plan to mean what it's labeled, agricultural, period. If divided, we've accepted grudgingly five-acre parcels, 10-acre parcels, but not residential. And I've been very disappened, if you go down by the airport, people have got a 10-acre parcel, they've bought it, somebody runs a road right up in the middle of it, and then it's all subdivided, which is last gentleman talked about. This is not what we want. We want a person to live on 10 acres, that's it, not subdivisible. The school and church does not fit the neighborhood. They also mention a free health clinic, which would draw an element that could cause problems. To change the zoning opens the door. Once you change this, every developer will be up there using this chance to say that they, the, that this will work for them. Forget this, we'll be able to work around the program because this was already in place. You can't unring the bell. Once the door is opened, you cannot go back. I live right across the street from this place, so let me tell you, the traffic on Lancaster is crazy. There is a horrendous number of dump trucks, excavating equipment, contractors racing to develop the lake. You have people that are just, they're not looking at the speed limits, they're bringing, it's, it's just, and it's chaotic. It, it just, it's nuts there. And it's very frustrating, because they've got, I've called, and I've called, and I've called, and they said that they don't have an adequate police force, and the number of deer killed out in front of my house, I've got five or six a year, it's just disgraceful. What's upset me the most of this whole thing is that the Seventh-day Adventists already have a 10-acre parcel on the corner of Government Way and Lancaster. To use that site would not cause additional traffic on Lancaster. It is an easy in and an easy out. Let them expand that site. Now, they said that there was some kind of a problem with hooking up to a sewer. Well, Hayden Canyon is going in. They are going to be having to bring in a sewer system. They should be able to convert or revamp or whatever that they've got on the pre-existing site to be able to bring in sewers. There's absolutely no excuse for them having to go up where we are. A member told me that the city of Hayden Lake had been uncooperative to their request for various other things. I called the mayor, Steve Griffiths, and he said that was untrue, and to call him if there were any questions. So I guess when you really look at this, who benefits from this? Who, who's, you mean to tell me all of this is for six children and for 60 to 80 cars on a Sunday? This is, this is crazy. The rest of us have to live with this. You just heard, they're from Athel, they're from all over the place, downtown Coeur d'Alene, and yet, we, who live right in the neighborhood, have got to change our whole environment because of just these few people who are coming in and taking apart. They already have a functioning facility on the same-sized piece of land. They do not need to build a new facility on Lancaster and Rimrock. It is not in keeping with the neighborhood. It will open the door to subdivisions as they make zoning changes. It will affect traffic, creating a hazard going in and out of the facility. And by the way, I told the commissioners, you think we don't care, we do care. But we have watched through time where you've allowed houses to be built on wetlands, you have allowed things to be built on places where there's runoff from roads, where it goes into the lakes, you have watched where we have not enough water pressure. And we've come to these meetings, and we come to these meetings, and we object, and we object, and you, you dislike, we don't exist. And so people are discouraged. We've lost faith in you. And so I, please, please deny this application. It will violate C, D, and G of your own development code. Do the right thing for the people, the wildlife, and the environment.
Thank you. Brenda Lucas, opposed, may wish to speak. And if out the corner of your eye, you watch the lights over there, you'll know what the timing is. Thanks.
Brenda Lucas, my address is 1996 East Lancaster Road, and I'm about a quarter mile down the road from this property. And I've watched, over the several years, the traffic has increased, and my, I love all the points that have been shared. I agree with the desire of the church to teach and educate and help have a facility where they can educate people to become better citizens of the United States, and I respect that. But I agree also to all the opposition points, that this will set a precedence for the area, and it'll increase traffic, it'll... The construction alone, I have so much litter in my yard that I have to go and pick up all the time, mostly construction vehicles. We have had police officers sit in our, in our driveway at times because of nails that get dropped on the road and flatten tires repeatedly. So any increase in construction on that road concerns me, because of, I have children, and I, it concerns me a lot that there's so much destruction and erosion to that area and pollution. I love what Mrs. Wilkins reported as well about the runoff and so forth. Just a couple of points that I believe the architect said and the pastor said. I know his main focus is to increase the quality of life, and I want you to consider, as a, as a fellow Christian, how this will affect the quality of life of the residents in the area, and how it will impact us about safety, the speed of the road, the traffic. Also, the architect said he was, architect said he was designing the space to be in keeping with about the size and the design in the area, but I don't know of any homes that are near 44,000 square feet and also have parking lots with 191 spaces. I think that's very much not in keeping with the neighborhood. And then also, the pastor said too, I'm grateful that they worship on Saturday, but I know from my own personal experience as a resident there, Saturday is the worst traffic day on Lancaster all day long. There are times when I have to sit in my driveway, and I wait, and I wait, and I wait, and I wait, while trucks and boats and you name it, it's, it's, it's on the road. So my concern is not only about Monday and Tuesday, but the Saturday issue is, is huge for me. And so I just hope that you will consider the residents of the area and our tax, we've had our taxes skyrocket, and I hope that that, the taxes that we, that we pay say something, that we want to live there, and that we're willing to stay there, but it is because we bought in an area that was agricultural and residential and not this space that can be used as kind of like a flex space where we can have, Dave Ramsey is a for-profit organization, and while I think their education is wonderful, I think it is in violation of the zoning and not respectful of the residential and agricultural area that is. Thank you.
Thanks. Leanne Owens, opposed, does not wish to speak. Karen Parrott, opposed, and it doesn't say whether wishes or not. Not? Not. Bryn Chatfield, opposed, may wish to speak. Thank you. Annette Kaleska, opposed, and doesn't say whether... I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. All right. We're recording, so. And since we're doing this, can you do your name and address, please?
My name is Bryn Chatfield, 12753 North Sunflower Loop, directly across. And my biggest question is, what is to keep this amendment, the conditional use permit? What is to keep this from opening a can of worms and allowing growth in other areas that is not zoned for? And I would love to have that be addressed by the other, as other side.
Okay, thank you. Annette Kaleska, opposed, and it doesn't say... Okay, thank you, sorry. Greg Wilkins, opposed, doesn't say. Thank you. Tom and Jane Harian, opposed, may wish to speak. Lisa Sharp, opposed, may wish to speak. Thank you. Mindy Boomer, opposed, may wish to speak. Thank you. And that's all the public comment sheets I have in the yellow. If we want to go to Zoom. Oh. Thank you. Linda Radigan, opposed, may wish to speak. You have to speak up for yourself, that's for sure.
Hi. I'm Linda Radigan, and I live at 37137 East Hayden Lake Road. And I'd like to say, it's a little bit reiterating what has been spoken. We have a wonderful, beautiful Hayden Lake. And as the watershed committee has told us, this could endanger it. And we don't want to endanger it. And we don't want to endanger our way of life. A lot of us moved out here years, years, years ago and made a sacrifice to go live somewhere where we checked the master plan so that we could live in a place that would stay agricultural. And, let's see, what else was I going to say? I'm hoping that we can look at this logically and not emotionally. Because logically, we know if this is built, it will open the door to commercialism, which is what this is. It's a commercial enterprise. Although it's a wonderful enterprise, it's just in the wrong location that they're proposing. And... Let's see, what else was I going to say? I'm hoping too that you will preserve our way of life. We elect leaders and we hire people that we think love our county and love to help it maintain the character that we all love. And this is not in character with our area. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Kevin Radigan, opposed, wishes to speak. Kevin? No? All right. Off to Zoom.
Madam Hearing Examiner, some of the Zoom members may not be familiar with the protocol. So I'm just gonna, I've muted everyone, but I'm gonna ask if there's anyone on Zoom that's in favor of this project. If you can, if you know how to do so, raise your hand now and I will unmute you and you can speak. While we're waiting, I will guess that a fair number of people don't know how to raise their hand. Oh, I got one, here we go. It looks like it's Collette. Collette, I've tried to unmute you. You can go now if you would like.
Hi, my name is Colette Purchase. I live in the Forest Ridge Estates Development at 12806 North Sunflower Loop. And I want to ditto what all the residents in my community, Mark Lord, Bryn Chatfield, several others have spoken up in opposition. I talked to several people throughout this entire Lancaster corridor. And I think you'd be hard pressed to find anybody really in support of this. It seems tonight the people that are in support of it are the architect, the developer, and people who might attend the school. And they have talked about wanting to embrace community and not create division. Yet, I think if you were to really go out and reach out to the community that this is going to affect, you're going to find that you have little to no support for this proposal. And that in and of itself creates a lot of division. I, like everybody else in this corridor, purchased my home to live in a country rural setting. I was told that land was agricultural. And I know this is a conditional use permit, but it functions to me as a zone change. You could put a Walgreens on that corner. It would have people in and out, probably the same hours of operation, maybe even less than this church is going to have. And that actually might serve the community here. A church and this school is not going to support this local community. Conditional use permits, I've seen it time and time again where conditions are laid out and violated. And I found it interesting that Mr. Morgan said over and over and over when he was talking, the number of participants, the number of school kids, the number of church attendees, he kept saying, "For now, for now, for now." And I just think over time, that's going to change. And it changes the whole entire dynamic for the thousand or more people who live in this corridor who this is going to impact. I think that it sets a dangerous, dangerous precedent. And it allows many, many parcels in here to pursue different courses. And I think it should be denied. I feel really sorry for the people immediately adjacent to this, what it will do to their property values, their quality of life. If the church really wants to help the community, and I think they do, I think they have found the wrong place to try to do that. And I encourage them to find the right place. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have actually asked for those in favor. So in keeping with your request for protocol, if there's anyone in favor of this project and would like to speak at this time, raise your hand. See none. Those in opposition, if you'd raise your hand and I'll just start taking you in the order I see them. Anyone in Zoom that would like to speak in opposition, if you'll raise your hand, I can unmute you at this time. Linda Tonlin. Linda, you should be, as soon as your mic comes on, you should be able to speak.
My name is Linda Tonlin. I live on Hayden Lake. The address is 12992 North Knox Road. And I am opposed for a number of reasons. I mean, this is a very attractive building, it's a laudable idea, but it is the wrong location. As previously said, this is agricultural area north of Lancaster and needs to stay that way. And there's other reasons besides that. The traffic, you've got 100 students in the future. I mean, okay, it's going to start with two days a week, but that will expand. And the traffic that's going to be caused by that is extensive. We notice it because I've lived here in this house for 22 years. So I have seen how much the traffic has expanded. And I have a difficult time getting out onto Lancaster because I'm at Rockaway Bay, so it's right where I'm in the dip. So it's hard to see beyond that. And it's going to get worse. The other issue, and Jan Wilkens did address that, the runoff. There is a stream that starts there on that property and runs, you know, basically across the street and down and down to the lake. And there's going to be a lot of stuff that's going to come out, that parking lot, the cars, the grass, the everything that you're going to be treating there, that's going to make it to the lake. And the lake is having so many problems right now. It's to the point, we took water out of the lake, drinking water out of the lake for years. You can't do it anymore because you have to do so many poison treatments to the lake to treat all the stuff that's going in. And it's not so much the septic stuff. It is, the big problem is the chemicals because they don't go away. So basically, I'm opposed. I'm concerned about expansion that this would cause in the future. I mean, okay, it's two days now, but it will expand over time. That's what they'll do with it. I will sign off from here.
Thank you very much.
Denise, I've unmuted you. As soon as your microphone comes on, feel free to speak.
Good afternoon, good evening, thank you. Hi there, I apologize. Learning how to do this. I live over at 1646 North Banane, over by the airport. I go to church there.
Could I get your full name for the record, please?
My name is Denise Beatty.
Thank you.
And I live over by the airport. But as a member there, the activity, the construction of the charter school, the coffee shop is so busy. I'm frequently there during the week and doing the yard and different things that are going on, so I'm there frequently. But that coffee shop, New Leaf Nursery, has, it's made it much more traffic. And once a year, we have activities that have several people there, but that's for a week. As for being part of the community, we have a lot of, we have AA meetings there that they come there and meet. Like five people come to the AA meetings. We have Dr. David DeRose coming for health classes, nutrition classes, cooking schools for outreach. I don't see many churches doing as much as, this is a very active outreach for the community. Health classes with Dr. John Chiquato. We do such extensive outreach for reaching people to, for their health. And cooking and quality of life is what we, you know, we're training people to, children, healthy lifestyles and better education to basic life skills. And as for the number of people, they go in at 9:30, maybe 12:30 to 2:30. As for causing traffic, I haven't seen that. Only at New Leaf Nursery and that coffee shop is a constant activity there. But as for the traffic, I have to kind of recoup that because it's very interesting because with the tractors going in and tearing up the road and everything. So I appreciate with the traffic concern and as for the homes over there, what about the new development? How many homes are going in there? They're not going to like what they have, any changes with that church that's going to be used for activities for a few hours at a time. What are they going to say with the community with all these hundreds of homes going in? I'd just like that to be considered, so thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak at this time, just raise your hand. Since I know there may be people that don't know how to do that, I'm going to, this time, I'm going to see if I can just allow any of you that would like to, to unmute yourself. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak at this time?
Shall I run through the...
Go through top to bottom?
Virtual public hearing comment forums that I've got that said they wanted to...
Sure, that'd help me.
Okay, we had Benjamin Hosley, who was opposed and wanted to be included. Do you see his name?
I don't see Benjamin.
Okay. Corinne Hosley?
Nora Corinne.
All right. Sarah Bradley?
I don't believe we have Sarah on Zoom.
Ryan Bradley?
Oh, Ryan is here. Ryan, would you like to speak? I'm not getting a response.
Okay, we also had Sean Bradley. And Colin Bradley.
Let's see, Sean, either of the other Bradleys.
And Lucas Bradley.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Craig Herm. Rebecca Hermsmeyer.
I'm not seeing her.
And Dustin Natchted.
No Dustin. One last time, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak at this time? Apparently not.
All right, then it's time for applicant rebuttal. Oh, Vlad, would you like to clarify something?
Yes, I forgot to enter into the record as part of my introduction to this application that we received late comments after the cutoff date of 10 days prior to tonight's hearing. And the comments have been entered into the file, but I'd like to officially enter them into the record. And they start with, I believe, P47. And I think Catherine will assign an HE exhibit number to it. So it will be available for your review and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, applicant rebuttal. And this is unheard of, that all you guys have stayed. This is great. It's always good to do, yes, thanks.
Greetings, everyone. My name again is David Morgan. I'm the pastor of the Hayden Lake Seventh Day Adventist Church, representing our church members. I'd like to share a few comments. I think it's helpful to notice many of the comments that our neighbors and people who live in the area where the proposed site will be have expressed, you know, the good that we intend to do and the things how it could be a benefit to the community. I'd like to address a few things. I think it's helpful to keep in mind that this parcel is 10 acres. It's not a small parcel. Also, there are a number of homes, as was on the exhibit, just south of Lancaster. So I'd like to ask the question, I wonder how much those homes would contribute to what was mentioned as the watershed into the lake. This parcel would just be, you know, being used on Saturdays and on Wednesdays when we have a small meeting. But also the school on two days a week, as I mentioned. And again, our application lists the potential for that school growing upwards of 100 students. that school growing upwards of 100 students. Right now, we have 21. But using that current ratio, we have about six to seven vehicles that would be in the location with 21 students. And if we had 100, at that same ratio, it would be 28 cars. And again, it would be at 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, when there's not as much traffic on Lancaster. And even if we were to just estimate that in 100 students, there were just two children per vehicle, you would have 50 vehicles during those times, during the week on Mondays and Tuesdays. I think that's helpful. In regards to the comment regarding the application stating the 191 parking spaces, I believe that's part of what is required based on the square footage of the facility. And also events where that, those parking spaces may be used would be occasional or seasonal, if you will. Special events, like many other churches have, like weddings and funerals and special events like that. As far as our students and the parents that would be bringing their children, I don't believe that the, that the traffic volume would be increased significantly on Lancaster, given the numbers that I've just cited. And in fact, they would be slowing down to come down, to come to this area for the school and wouldn't be going beyond and adding to the problem that has been mentioned regarding speeding, people speeding in that area. In regards to the stormwater and runoff, I also like to point out that we, in the development of this property, will incorporate retention ponds and swales designed to reduce any potential runoff. And so I think that's important to keep in mind, and those who make decision whether to approve or disapprove our requests. One of the comments I think is helpful to keep in mind that at this present state of the school for homeschoolers, there are 21 students. We don't know exactly what that's going to be in the future, but we're just estimating based on the application that it could reach a potential of 100. So I think that's helpful to keep in mind that we are just estimating what the potential students could be. I want to point out that my understanding is that the speed limit is 45 on Rimrock. And I want to reemphasize the fact that we are intending, as was given in the presentation, that we are intending that this facility and the buildings will fit the area as much as possible. So as far as we appreciate the agricultural area and everything that we will do in designing this, as was pointed out, will fit into the areas as much as we're able to. I think that's helpful for each one of us to keep in mind. But one of the reasons, as was mentioned regarding, you know, why we're moving, the estimated cost for us to plug into septic, excuse me, sewer system would be upwards of $400,000. So the current location is really not adequate for what our needs are. And that's part of the main reason why we are seeking another location, to build a church and to have a school that would support homeschooling families. So many of the comments, we appreciate those that have shared comments. We understand their concerns as neighbors. And we just want everyone to know that in our design of this and in our intentions is to be a blessing to the community. And as I pointed out, the different projects and the different clinics and classes that will be offered will be open to all of the community. And we believe that a church would be a blessing to this area. In fact, it's a nonprofit organization, as many may understand. And so this isn't for profit. It's not like a convenience store or other business. This is here to actually help people in the community. So thank you for this time to speak, and we hope that our proposal will be approved. Thank you again.
I have a couple of questions for you. If you took a map of the area, much like Vlad put up at first to show the location of your site, and dropped pins where your current congregation and members live, where would they predominantly be from?
They would be from surrounding areas. I personally live in Athol. Many of them live in Corder Lane. Some live in Hayden. Some live in that area as well. So there's a variety of people. They're not just from one particular area of Cootney County. With this program being for homeschoolers, you know, it's a focus to assist those parents in the neighborhood who homeschool, as many of the comments have expressed.
Need you to speak up for the mic, because I know you get kind of quiet there. The current membership in your, in your church is 100 and?
We have an average attendance, I would characterize it. We have a membership that's greater, but as in many churches, it's about 150 to 170 that attend. And that's a recent poll or counting of people.
How many could you accommodate on a Saturday service?
Well, if we didn't have the restrictions from Panhandle Health regarding COVID, we might be able to handle upwards of, I think the seating is around 250 possibly. But that's based on the total square footage, not necessarily of actual use of the facility, as far as seating, the number of people. So when we have about 170, we are maxed out in our sanctuary for events. In fact, there have been times where we have to put people in the fellowship hall where we have meals after the service on a typical basis because of the amount of people, because of the size of the sanctuary. So it's really restrictive to what we're trying to accomplish in our worship service.
And you're currently doing homeschooling in your present site?
Yes. It started actually this week.
So one of the questions that was raised was with regard to the fact that you've got a 10-acre site with a lot of green space. What's, what you're thinking about long-term expansion of your facility?
Present facility or?
Your new one, if you?
Yeah. So with our expansion?
Yeah.
Well, what we'd like to do is, as far as the amount of people, it could expand, I think in the application, we have some of those numbers. But expand upwards of about 300, if I remember correctly, as far as attending. That would be on a future basis. It wouldn't be necessarily once it's constructed.
But no further square footage?
No, we don't have any plans for further square footage, other than what the design is. And that design is to, is at that level because of special events that would be taking place, not on a weekly basis. So in designing and having the opportunity to design a new facility, we want to be able to accommodate special events like youth rallies and different things. So that, that's the reason for, part of the reason for having that increase in square footage. Recently, we've had people come in and request to use our facility, youth rallies and various events because of neighboring states don't allow gatherings. And as you may know, Idaho is a little more open. So that has been a reason why maybe some of our neighbors have seen more cars in the area, in our parking lot. It's because sometimes people have that need and are looking for facilities to use. But as far as the size of it, it would be based on special events that would be taking place. And that's why we went with that, part of the reason, as well as our growth as far as a church.
In the public comments that were received prior to the termination of the time for written public comments, one of them was with regard to the entire site, the 100 acres, I guess, of which this 10-acre piece was, and the statement that I read was that it was donated to you all. Is there any hope that additional property from that 100-acre parcel would be donated?
I don't think so, no. And that was donated from a member who really believes in Christian education. So we weren't actually, we're designed, you know, to be a blessing. So this was given to us, this property was donated to the church. It wasn't something that the donor was making money off of as a developer. It was something that this person wanted to do to be a blessing to the community.
Okay.
I think that's safe to assume. So I'd like to state, if I may, that we're not planning any further development on the property other than what's in that narrative as far as structures and things. And I think it's helpful to keep in mind that part of the school program is agricultural, which is befitting the area of this proposed site.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
That being the case, this is the conclusion of case number CUP 19-0004. Thank you all for your attendance and participation.